Let's begin the, uh, the meeting of the planning board Monday, November fourth, starting time six oh two P M. Would somebody like to read the opening statement? We do have, uh, Jen on it.
Sure, I'll read it. Pursuant to chapter two, the Acts two thousand twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means of importance without the full law. Please know that while an option for remote attendance and or participations being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. Meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by using the Zoom log and information and agenda viewers' conversation. Yes, the local scene dot media slash Doc's free for visual techs for programming, putting streaming. All those will be roll calls.
Thank you. All right, welcome everyone. Um, do we have anything for open forum today?
No. Uh, well, I'll off with that, uh, in circulating, uh, because, uh, people, uh, raise concerns about lack of progress on the comprehensive plan and the impediments of not having plenty of planning staff and uh, so employing a proposal for some type of steering group or other committee that could be born to fill that gap into such shine here as we have a full-time planner system.
So to help implement some of the items?
Yeah, yeah, because I see that, uh, it's clear, you know, every board has a full set of responsibilities and then comprehensive plan is just dumped on top of that. And so it's always a thought of the agenda. So if there were to be a group forum, which was focused specifically on advancing goals laid out in various plans, they can coordinate all that together.
So, Daniel, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, is this something that you're saying that we would have a sub-group to help them implement the, the plan for partners, or to help in other groups? Uh, everybody else would be asking.
Yeah, more focused on committees because the town manager acts as a C E O for the boards and department, the department heads. As far as the committees go, really isn't even, other than having a planner, we do have planners coordinate all the committee groups. There's really no central coordination, so I'm suggesting it would be fun to do that.
Just first Ryan started that, but to your point, that was first Ryan started that. Is that something I would be built about setting up it, says something, you're gonna, um, package proposal, do we have an implementation, implementation working?
Yes, steering group or something, I mean, it's such a, a concept right now, so it'd be to try and, and break the law, yeah.
And try to help other committees, other, other groups in town.
Yeah, because for example, the, the plans, each of them lay out priorities that were cast at the time. And then events unfold and information comes to light and the priorities need to change, and yet there isn't anybody making sure that each of the committees is aligning the priorities to make progress and we're all kind of going side based in different directions.
And I think is that also one of the, um, the town manager's goals to help to implement that or so? Or no, there was something that we were asking.
There were asked, yes, yeah. And the select, uh, town managers.
Alright, so how can we do something like that, a working group?
Well, it could be done, you know, either by the select one town manager or committee, but through a town meeting.
Question is, where do you draw? Home personnel, I would be.
Yeah, it would be a little general and you have to specify responsibilities.
Do you want to put that on our agenda for?
Well, if, you know, who wants to pursue it, I'm happy to structure it. It would be a recommendation from the planning board to decide what to create.
We do that, we see what we get for feedback and then, and then beyond that, still we get for volunteers.
Right, and beyond that, that would be your question. Yeah.
Thanks.
You keep going.
I guess as far as our number one. Alright, number two, we have several administrative items that can be moved as a single item or we can move them, um, individually. Uh, I would actually, I was actually going to ask a question about the meetings. And that is, do we need to have those sidelines that, uh, twenty-four two minutes before town meeting? I did not have a chance to avoid them all. We're gonna have, um, oh, we'll have. We're going to have a working.
Yeah, we have another meeting right on four.
Cancel, yeah, assume one fourteen, yeah.
Could we push those off, just the twenty-first until the next meeting, but that, okay?
Yep.
Otherwise, um, I guess that means we'll pull them all individually. So, uh, any discussion on Z B A case twenty twenty-four dash twenty, so fifteen eighteen tree month street. This is for an elimination of aside.
Watch there.
Yeah.
Not much to it.
Yes, it wasn't a lot to the occasion, some minimal drawing system proposed signage.
Yeah. And if that's, we get back to it, the pro for the filming order.
Let's see, that is third decision.
Yes, exactly.
Do we have anybody here for that? For thirteen eighteen, thirteen eighteen, enough for that. Uh, so if we want, uh, we, uh, if you like to entertain, uh, people, so, uh,
Sure, we have guys, the, the, uh, for the, uh, assign the elimination.
Discussion. I will call for a roll call votes, uh. Jen, do you want to start?
Sure. Jen Turner, aye.
Scott Castor, aye.
Kristin Raphael.
Matthew Ray, aye.
Ted Cartman, aye.
Alright, next up would be the minutes for October ninth. Uh, do we have, uh, proposals to move that forward?
I've moved to approve the minutes from the October nine, twenty twenty-four meeting. Second.
Any discussion? Alright, so call for a roll call vote on, um, the minutes for October ninth. Uh, Jen? Jen Turner, aye.
Scott Castor, aye.
Kristin Raphael.
Matthew Ray, aye.
Alright, and the next up, the twenty-first, if we're just, we need a roll call, we need to find whether to move that or we just move the next thing.
It is moved to the next.
We just didn't vote on that.
Okay. Alright, next up, five Hawthorne Hill, review of site plan showing the vegetated spot. Um, do we have somebody here who would like to speak to that?
Go ahead. I'd like to take, uh, comment against what the plan represents with the time for that, let me know.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, do we have an, a representative from five Hawthorne?
Yeah.
I'm the builder, I didn't do the subdivision or anything, but, uh, there is, uh,
Name?
Jonathan McKinnney. Um, this, my client bought the property, it's already subdivided and all that, we go, the butter, it's all on here, it says, if we go into it or don't maintain it, we're fifty feet away from it right now. Um, if we don't maintain it or anything else, we'd be planting, uh, says nine giant.
Dividing.
Green giant ardivites, that's what the plan says, so we said we obliged by that, and that's what it is, we're not in there, we didn't clear cut anything, we didn't ever go into the buffer. We don't plan to intend to be even close to the buffer, we're forty feet from the ten yard setback right now, there's stakes there, I got pictures of it all, we have fence, we have everything away from it, so, uh, I don't under for me, I don't know, it's already been submitted, we permitted, we're digging, we're pouring the foundation. So we do have a small, uh, site plan for a rough idea of what our finished landscape's gonna be, but again, not even close to the buffer, I can tell that we're good for that.
Could be somebody to, who is moving this, and out to the side.
Okay, so, so, I mean, our, so I'm not sure what the concern is, we're not gonna be near the buffer.
The requirement for in the development, you know, and we have it highlighted, so here, item five. Where's it prior to the issuance of building permit for any lot where a twenty-foot natural buffer uh, is not maintained, the construction of the new home, a landscape plan and site plan reviewed by the planning board will be required.
We're maintaining.
And, okay, so when you applied for the permit for the site.
Yeah.
Well, then you didn't do anything different, right? We didn't take down anything that was already there and.
Uh, I have not, no.
Yeah. Okay, and there's a, and there is a plan in here at this point, so you have, you have a plan for the landscape up there, you indicated what, five hour provide east.
Yeah, that was on the site plan that was submitted when the development was divided, not, not something I had anything to do with, I was given this. I was told we're sold a lot, and then, uh, you know, we did our due diligence, we said if there was anything that got obstructed, we'd take care of it. We're not doing it, we didn't do the clear cutting, I sat in Jim's office the other day, we went back from video to video from when the fines, we own the property, subdivided it, and they had their people chop up whatever.
When the road went in.
Yeah, we had nothing, yeah, we're just, we're just, we're fifty, fifty, sixty feet from the buffer or from the property line anyways.
Yeah.
And we're at least forty feet plus from the twenty-foot buffer.
Okay, so what do you have going on there and what you get your permit for, then, it are requirement? So, question is, what are we?
Why are we bringing it here now?
I have no clue.
We got a call from a bar, as we say, uh, there was, um, landscaping equipment. They were just calling and questioning, uh, uh, the board didn't review the other site plan. Basically, you guys just have to sign all one side plan and saying that they're treating stuff, they're supplementing for the vegetation buffer.
They're, they're the, they're the tree that were the original plant.
So that's, that, that states if I don't maintain it to add the nine ardivites, we're gonna do that anyways.
Okay, so you left it at what?
We, we haven't touched any of the hill.
And you're gonna still put nine ardivites, five or whatever.
Yeah, and that's still without, but, yeah, that's not even close to the buffer, so we're gonna do just the line of buffer for our clients.
On your side of the buffer.
Yes.
You're doing it, correct. We don't need to see what you're doing on your side of the buffer.
Yeah, we're not even, yeah, and I got pictures that show it all and everything else.
Okay, now I would imagine up at the top of the hill, I know we were having some erosion and some other things up there, so either mulch has been put down or wrapped around or something.
Not from us.
I, I can speak to that, if you'd like me to.
Are you, you done right now, sir?
Sure.
Yep.
On the bottom, uh, twelve thousand and ten months.
Hey, John, yeah.
Um, couple of things, number one, I, he, he could be right, uh, but when they went in and clear cut the subdivision, um, I don't know, people don't know today, how far that clear cut went on my property, I'm looking at stakes and walking it. I would say they're within three to five yards of my property, number one. Um, so I'm trying to figure out from a approval perspective, um, what is being done to, the, the buffer I think you're speaking of is my land, not theirs. You could be wrong, I've never seen a state.
You're talking about all the landscaping that exists. Now, on the top of the hill, there's a, there's a, there's clear, uh, sight lines and sight pins against your property at the top of the hill.
It's shaped.
Yes.
All along the property, yeah?
Yes, it is, there's a ten-foot stakeout that shows us where our ten-foot mark is on the hill, and on the top of the hill, which is here, this is their property land.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the ten-foot mark is, this is a fifteen-foot mark, there's stakes five feet back from this, and then there's the old fence that was up there, the existing old fence that's left.
Yeah.
Our fence is down here.
No, no, yeah, I understand, I don't really wish it.
So you're twenty foot.
Sorry, we can't really see anything.
Yeah.
Talking about here, so. So, there's an old fence, old cow fence up there. It's all dilapidated, half the.
Right along here, it's sort of more or less.
Yeah, yeah, some of it's on there, some of it's stays along the property line itself, divided it, so this is the top of the hill.
Okay.
There's, this is the fifteen-foot mark, any plans, fifteen-foot in property line, so our twenty-foot, our fence is here, and then there's a ten-foot stake right about here that goes across, that shows us our ten-foot point of property line, so we don't cross there.
And the buck, the buffer's twenty, you know, right, so you got a fifteen-foot setback would be, but you gotta be in twenty feet, the twenty feet has to be natural vegetation buffer.
Right, right, so this is a ten, this is a ten-foot marker, these are dead trees that are just laid, I don't know who did whatever this is or anything like that.
The site development did all that.
So this is before our client purchased that, but so our liability is not to what has been done prior to us purchasing the property back in whatever, we're following the rules of what was given to us.
I'm not sure I agree with those statements, but go ahead.
So, just so we understand, so.
And that's, like I said, yeah, so you can see, you know, we're way above where we are, so the the hill here, there's a property line up there essentially right at the crest where all the trees are, so we're well forty feet, if you measure down fifty feet from there, from the property line, at least fifty to sixty feet. And we're maintaining that, we're not exceeding any of the fastest fence.
My, my contention is somewhat different, this is the property line, it was basically clear cut all the way back into here, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, so the property line has no trees on it at all.
That, that's my, that's my recollection from what, and I've watched this very closely, I can imagine.
So my. I remember when this all first came up, there were still trees there.
Yes, all the heavily tree, so I
after they started putting in the road.
Correct, so my, my understanding was that from my property line, if the vegetation was removed, it would be a twenty-foot buffer along the property line replaced to replace the foliage and this taken out.
And we said, that's not you.
I'm, that's not you.
Understood.
Original developer.
And will be.
Right, the help.
Where's the fence in there?
The fence?
And where's the fence in the pictures?
This orange fence?
No, no, the field.
Fence, there are not, there, so that's up here on this line, I don't, I don't have.
I don't see it at all in the picture, so is it?
It's, it's all rusted, yeah, it's, it's all rusted, but it's.
But is it in the woods or is it in front of the woods?
It's right on the little.
Right on the wood line, which I think is the property line.
So it sounds like there's no, there's no vegetation.
It's all, this is the vegetation would be is on this hill here. And, and yes, he's right, if they came in, I would, I don't know what the property looked like, but on the G I S, when you guys have something, Jim's got something in town, he went back from when it was originally where the one house was before they moved it, and it shows it all, and he's not wrong, I think they overcut, but I don't know what, you know, that's before, this set a year or so before we purchased the property.
And, and in fairness to you and the developer.
I'm not, there's no development, everybody's individual up there.
Virtually, this entire spat in here is heavily polied right now, I don't think anything needs to be done there, this is not.
This, so this right here is the current vegetation, right?
This, there is.
Way behind you, no vegetation, no.
The only, the vegetation starts up here and then that corner piece is vegetated, but the top of the hill, which is with a clear cutting, has nothing on it, that's in, in base, in this erosion, but the bark mulch was put down.
Yeah.
At my request to the town and buying said, yep, absolutely, it was an erosion issue, let's take care of it.
Okay, now we got these trees coming in here?
Correct, but what, what I, what I read the hearing to say, the, the conclusion of the hearing was that this entire strip, if it was clear cut, would be revested within twenty feet of the property line. And that does not appear to be what's going on.
And so.
Well, we just started the house too, and I'm just saying.
This is the landscape, I mean, that's all you have to look at, so.
What this is, that's a site man for.
Nine hour.
That was prior to me too.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just. If we, if we've got it, and it's not vegetated anymore on the hill, it, which everybody's pretty much saying, and it's supposed to be. So, we already got the building permit, we understand that sometimes happens, obviously the building inspector didn't see this and say that, but we're here now. And it's supposed to be a twenty-foot natural buffer. Now, it was natural buffer, it doesn't say it has to be trees.
No.
Natural buffer, yeah, so it can be anything that we're not working, and it does look like we're putting trees in the thinnest spot here, right, so we're getting something in the thin spot.
Right.
And, um, is that the extent of the landscape plan for the hill at this point, top of the hill?
So, for the top of the hill.
Yeah. At this twenty-foot area.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is for me, because that's what, um, uh, Grady asked us to do, so we, we said we'd do it, I know the H O A said, but we're also following our rules, we're maintaining that twenty-foot, we're not going in.
You're not doing anything in there.
Right, so, and that's where we're separating, I, you know, I can go back to my client and say, you gotta put in X amount of dollars to trees that's not expected, they don't mind doing some, and I don't either, because I'm green, but it's, it's the point, I, I don't up here, I don't even know what's up here, because we don't go up there, but I don't mind filling in this area here, there are trees all on here in, in St. George Street.
And some of that's a bit irrelevant.
Right.
This, this was the deal, which is.
Any lot along this side of the.
Right, so what is it?
Twenty-four.
And we need some sort of landscape plan, which, if this is filling in.
That was.
Narrow, yeah, that was what was submitted, that's what's being submitted now, right?
It was previously submitted too, when the development was split. When this is just a site plan from the development.
The original development site plan had these five or six.
No.
I don't remember that.
It came after then, because this is what was given to us, and the only thing they did for us was put a septic on here, and I probably can pull it up, but I don't have it on me. I mean, but the original, original approval said we basically maintained as much vegetation as we can.
Yeah.
They did not, they would have basically cleared out the site.
I think that, that, because there was, we had a lot of, we had some discussion about.
I believe there's a lot of issues with the steepness of the hill, and they dug out in here to get the road in, anything else.
Yep.
That, that caused it to keep moving back, in that standpoint.
Though, my point of view is the other is, I think that certainly more than nine ardivite, that's what was anticipated on your approval.
So I. Oh, we didn't said any number.
No, I know you didn't, I, it's not, all I'm saying is that it said it would be a landscape buffer, which that does not appeared from five to.
In terms of the approval, hindsight's twenty, twenty, because as Scott mentioned, building permits has been issued preemptive. We needed to see a landscaping plan and a site plan, because the twenty-foot buffer is not maintained for the construction of the home.
Again, that is maintained for the new construction of the home. It was not maintained when they demoed.
Yeah. You bought that, that's what, you got, you guys bought that situation at that point, that's, um, unfortunate, but the facts. So, this requirement runs with any of the lots along the buffer line, this is, I think there's one or two more lots.
Yeah.
There's two more, yeah. That have the exact, that's the exact same issue.
Yeah, the condition exists in all of it.
But as, I understand, this, this was like the most encroached upon down here, they didn't dig in as much.
Yes.
Didn't push as far back as the hell. So, I don't want to don't think you should want to slow them down on, on what they're doing. The, the project itself, because it's not in that area, we need some sort of a landscape.
I think, I think.
For this area.
Says before a certificate of occupancy is issued.
It's supposed to be before you get a landscape plan that's comprised of the. Supposed to be before the building permit, right? So, um, again, I don't see this real good, I don't want to slow you guys down.
No, I don't, I don't see any reason to do that, as long as some reasonable landscape plan is, is presented in the.
We need to see something that's going to, and I think we're gonna need to probably one or two of us as a representative group go there and take a look at it.
Has Grady can something put together a landscape plan yet?
No, they're not going to, and I don't know why, uh, Rick's not here, so I mean, he, here's the thing, I got this dropped on me last week. I shouldn't be here, this has nothing to do with us, it has to do with the previous landowner.
And everything to do with that role is this.
And everything else and after this, so, you know, um, this, this is, uh, not what my clients bought, we understood that, we, we understood this, because this was an issue to us, we understood that there's no plan that's set in course, which should probably have been set in course prior to any selling the properties and, um.
That's up to buyers.
I get that, but.
Because we don't care.
This wasn't brought up in the purchase and sale of the property that, you know, um, that this property alone needed more than what was offered, so you know, uh, again, um, we have no problem trying to help you out and doing whatever, but.
May not require more than what's on here, but we gotta see the, see the plan, and if this is the plan, then we've got to see.
There was landscape equipment up there and.
I, that was not me, I said nothing about that.
Okay, so I have no problem coming up with something, I'll talk to Rick about it, but you know, obviously, uh.
Well, this is what you've got here.
Yeah.
Got three, three nine.
Nine.
Coming up here, there, and then we can take a look at the site to see if that nine is gonna accomplish as best we can, what we thought was gonna be going on there, and I don't know along, you know, some of the rest of this, because it is kind of steep up there, obviously the mulch is there to try to maintain it, but you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Other plantings of some form, some sort of vegetation in there, nothing that has to be like huge trees like this, so I don't think what you're not really looking at is like shielding out of the house from each other and.
Looking at that to a degree. My house is here, so this vegetation here is fine, but as I said, I mean, this was clear cut, I think we all know it was heavily vegetated. Um, and the agreement was this, what this represents is about nineteen percent of the property line is getting some sort of vegetation. That is not what I read to be the intention.
I get approval, we need, we need to see it, this is what, this is technically what's being submitted to us right now, basically what we got here would be nine ardivites. That's, that's what's sitting on there now, so if we go look at it, we say, you know, we're okay down here, and these fill in here, and what's left? Or, or are we good with just that, so I think we need to see it to see exactly where the lot line is. I don't know that they clearly have retreated a lot line all along the whole thing or where it is, so without us seeing it, we, we can't tell.
Same thing, I, I personally can't tell, I mean, if it was staked, or I, you know, there's a boundary down here, and there's a couple miscellaneous stakes.
Yeah, well, I imagine the stakes there, so. We would have gone.
That's just, uh, it's pretty straight, so.
Yeah, okay, so I think that's, that's probably, again, I, I don't, I don't have an issue, it doesn't sound like you have an issue, would you guys keep going?
Yeah.
Do you know, I don't have an issue with that, no, and we just need to formalize what's gonna happen up in here. This is gonna be good enough when we look at it, then, then okay, if not, or we say, you know, you know, slide them down this way a little bit or slide them over or something. We'll figure out something.
Yeah.
We'll figure out something.
Fair enough.
And so we'll stick with this as more or less the, a plan that we have for right now. As everybody's all right with that, and then we'll, we'll go see it and see if anything more is needed, I mean, I'm sure they're gonna want to have some vegetation on the hill themselves. Wait, some more.
I don't think they won't mulch, but yeah, I mean, as far as that, there is a, as I said, there is a, someone put around the house, not up on the hill, but, um, we intend to, for your erosion, we'll have a, 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 a small wall to help it from the side and stuff, so we plan on retaining, so, uh, there is, there is some, some, enough landscaping around to.
Okay, we just need to make sure we're, we're maintaining what is proper along there as, as sure as best as possible, so technically, we have, we have a plan, we'll, you know, we'll try, we'll be a more, but a couple of us will try to go out there and see what's what with all of that part of it, and see if there's anyplace else that, that we agree is, you know, not maintained the way that.
How do I understand when we've done that? Because I, I physically called Emily when somebody started digging the hole, I said, what's up?
Yeah.
When this is where we're at, so.
Um, what we can do is we'll try to arrange a couple of people to go and we'll organize it, uh, through the office and we'll contact both the builder. Anybody, okay, great, so this, you know, we can't all be the same day, we can't all be there the same day, but we'll do what we can do.
And see, not a problem.
Everybody's good with that. Now, come up with us, we'll, we'll get it solved.
Thanks, fair enough.
Thank you, thank you. Have a great night.
Have these things in there. Try to keep buildings on the bottom, and it happens every, every time the building company gets in. And then, we're, we're back. Okay, we'll just have to take a look at it. I I as I recall, I didn't. I thought some of the more of the trees were already sealed there, so.
Was a new great selection of vegetation.
Lot of white pines. Yeah, so this up to there. Yeah, it and it got missed, but we'll. We'll figure out a way. Get it fixed as best we can. Let's see. Next item we've got. Continue public hearing six oh one Fremont Street subdivision. We can close it out last time, so just break back into the. All right, what do we got now? Where did we leave off on this?
I think you wanted to get Brennan to where he went.
Yes.
And I think he's here tonight.
All right. Pat, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I um and I apologize for missing the last meeting. I had a conflict. I reviewed the the original plans, submitted a letter dated October fourth to the board. Um subsequent to that letter, Mr. Altobello and his team. I responded to that letter um with a response letter and revised plans. Um I reviewed those and they addressed my comments. They also, one of my comments had to do with the width of the road. And the fire department weighed in on that. There was a. Letter from um the fire department saying they're comfortable with the fourteen foot. Wide roadway with an eighteen inch cape card berm provided that they had. Stabilized shoulder width to provide twenty feet overall of stabilized width, um which which is what they show in the plan, so I I believe that they're okay there. Uh one of my other comments was related to. Checking with the fire department to see if they. Wanted another fire hydrant and in their letter, they said that they were they were comfortable with the. With what was proposed, so they didn't have to add another hydrant. I had a number of comments about the drainage, which um Dana Altobello had taken care of. And at this point, you know, I'm I'm comfortable with the with the plan the way it is. They are requesting. Five waivers from the rules and regulations. Um not sure if you reviewed those last time, but I can run through them real quickly for you. The first one is uh one of your requirements in the rules and regs is that they. Show existing trees when the pros right away that are equal to or greater than twelve inch diameter. Um they've asked for a waiver for that. Basically. Um because it's a fairly short road and they're providing a thirty foot buffer to the between the right of way. And the properties to the north, um so they're providing a thirty foot buffer in that location um for those. Northerly neighbors there. Another requirement is the submission of environmental impact assessment. Um again, they're asking. For a waiver from this due to the size of the subdivision with it being only three lots. Um and they they're claiming that any impact should be negligent negligible. The next waiver is um. You have a requirement where streets entering opposite sides of it across a street from another street. Uh the minimum centerline offset is supposed to be two hundred feet. The centerline offset to um Heritage Lane, which is across the street at about a hundred and five feet. So they're requesting that waiver. Again, they're closer to Heritage Lane. Um because of that thirty foot buffer, they 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 could get another thirty feet if they want it right up to that um buffer on the northerly side. Um but they are requesting that waiver uh along their frontage. They they wouldn't be able to provide that two hundred foot offset. The next regulation is a fifty foot buffer of existing vegetation between all basins and adjacent uses of structures. The recon the basin that they're proposing to reconstruct for the runoff from the church parking lot. Would not have that fifty foot buffer completely around it. They are proposing it in a location that will reduce tree clearing. And fit into the existence of geography a little bit better, so um. So that's why they're asking for that waiver. And then. Um the last waiver is. On your typical street cross section um requires Cape Cod burns on both sides of the street. This this proposed roadway is going to be super elevated to the north, so there'll be no crown in the road. It will all be sloped to the north. Um and that's to provide for basically the low impact development drainage that they're. Proposing here with the um basically the rain garden along that northerly side of the road. All runoff will flow off into that. And um. Into those rain gardens and and get treated that way. So that's that's the reason for asking for that waiver. There's really no reason to have a Cape Cod berm on the uphill side of the road because it's. The Cape Cod burns are supposed to propose to channel the runoff and there shouldn't be any runoff on that side because it will flow to the other side. So those were the five waivers they're asking for. And again, you know, all my other comments have been have been addressed and I'd be happy to answer any questions if any of the board or the public have has any.
Thank you very much. Question here on the board.
Yeah, I I thought, uh thank you, Pat. Um some of the questions I had, uh one of the questions I had has to do with the width of the road. Did you just say it would be twenty feet wide? The berms.
It it's so there's a they're proposing a fourteen foot wide travelway. With an eighteen. Inch Cape Cod berm, so fifteen and a half feet of pavement is what it would be. And then they have a four and a half foot, basically a stabilized shoulder. So the shoulder would be drivable. It it would be it'd be grasp, but there'd be a gravel um base under the loam. So that if if a. Fire truck or a large vehicle went off the side of the roadway, it wouldn't get stuck. It it would be supported, and that's what the fire department requested was that. That stabilized shoulder rather than having the twenty feet of pavement.
They requested additional. Support on the side because it's not twenty feet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they were okay with it not being twenty feet as long as they had that.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think one of the other things, Pat, is we were looking for a little, I I was looking for a little guidance for you on the um. On the intersection or a lack of intersection, I guess, with Heritage Lane. Um one of the neighbors talked about the fact that actually by keeping it. By not lining it up, he thinks it will help with water control or water drainage from Heritage Lane. Uh but can you talk a little bit about maybe sightlines and how whether or not that's a concern for you?
No, three A is is very straight in that location, so they have more than adequate sightline distances in both directions. In Heritage Lane being the hundred, you know, hundred and five feet away, centerline to centerline. It's, you know, it's it's not the two hundred feet, but. It it's 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 a fairly low volume of traffic, um especially coming out of this proposed roadway with only three houses. So. You know, I I really wouldn't be. Very concerned with with um sightlines and any kind of an. Um issue with vehicles exiting Heritage Lane in this road at the same time. I I think that you'd be. You'd be okay with that. It it I don't I don't have an issue with it.
They run into more than that. Entranceway and exit of the church is practically right there. So.
Um and then Pat, one of the things, can we talk? I wanted to talk a little bit about the hammerhead. Um. The fire department said that they would want that to be clearly marked as a fire lane, um which makes sense, except in a residential area that seems like overkill. So is there a way that we could? So what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, they're proposing signage um there. Saying that it's a fire lane and I'm just, I want to try to pull up the plan while I'm talking to you. And actually, that was one other thing that I I wanted to mention that I failed to mention previously. DPW doesn't like hammerheads, um and so one of my comments was a recommendation that this street be private and. Maintain private perpetuity. That way DPW doesn't like the hammerheads just for snow plowing reasons for the most part. So. On other projects that we've had in town with small subdivisions like this. Um the board has has asked the the applicant to. Have them be private roadways so that the homeowners association is is responsible for snow plowing and maintaining the road. But again, let me let me just check. Dana. Dana, you I know you're proposing signs. Was there anything else you're proposing for the uh hammerhead no parking?
Uh we just shown the the signage, um you know, we could do some striping. It just seemed a little uh. Like industrial, you know, a residential driveway, um but we're happy to, you know, work with the the board, uh with whatever they're they feel is best.
I think we just we just need to make sure that nobody. Decides because it looks like their driveways.
Yeah.
To go. Putting a fence. Right up next to it on both sides of it or other plantings in there that'll get in the way if the truck tries to turn around or. Or a gate to their driveway or any of that walls, things like that, anything that's gonna get in the way up there. You gotta figure the hammerhead will work for them to turn around. That's not to say they're gonna. Hit the pavement perfectly when they're trying to turn around the big truck. Just can't have that whole area needs to be. Something that. The individual homes that are. Coming off of that aren't utilizing that space in any ways if it's their own.
It can be addressed in the private room maintenance agreement.
Yeah, you can't build anything in that area at all.
And hopefully it's red.
Yeah, 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 that'll be good too.
But I think they're red actually a little bit more than conditions on planning boards, unfortunately.
Probably, probably. But I think you're gonna try the signage to begin with anyway, and I think. We haven't necessarily. Pushed anything like that. Necessarily in the past, so we'll just see how that. How that works. Yeah, we haven't made that. Signage involved, but now that, you know, fire department's gonna ask him about it, so. They're bringing it up because. They've run into an issue somewhere, so so we'll try that as long as everybody knows. You can't be doing other things up there. Should be parking your spare cars in that area and that sort of thing, so it's gotta be free and clear.
But it makes sense because we have to remake it a condition of the HOA documents for the we see that. Of the subdivision or. Of the.
We just make that a requirement. In one of our. Conditions. Can you have anything?
I do not.
Tackle a little bit on the waivers. I'll give. A little what we generally see on the board across these types of waivers. These aren't these aren't unusual. Um the trees on such a short. Road situation, what's got going on there? I don't think there's any. Those specimen trees where the road's going on the way in there. So the trees aren't an unusual thing for us to be doing. The environmental impact on something this small, it's all built up around the. Large. Swath plant somewhere else. Nobody's done any development around it. Generally, okay. Um the fifty foot. Basin clearance, I think. Where do we lose the fifty feet around this at the church parking lot?
Yes, that's correct. It's at the church.
The other house, it's gonna be built. We've got a fifty foot. Buffer to their property line or not?
The the existing houses in the butter, they all have fifty feet. It's the it's the new lot, the supply B.
Yeah.
Uh that won't have the fifty foot and then the the church parking lot.
Yeah. Okay. That is one we try not to have to deal with too much, but we have. Range of waivers on that numerous numerous times because there's quite a bit of space there. Between where that house is gonna be and where the basement is. And um. Usually we ask for some sort of. You know, landscape shielding. Across there, but it looks like you probably don't want in there as it is anyway, so.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be. Too bad. Cape Cod berm thing makes sense. Put up a Cape Cod berm, you're gonna end up catching water instead of letting it go to where it's supposed to go, so. On that side, so to me, that all makes sense. The only thing is, you know, that's a little bit different. Is we're not at the two hundred feet. Or lining up the roads. Again, not highly unusual, but.
But we're also accommodating.
And even if you weren't accommodating the butters, we still couldn't get.
Yeah, and it's still. Three lots.
It's three lots. There's not a lot of traffic coming out of there. In my example, I mean, it's a very. Main road. The church, it's letting out. People coming into church or letting out for church for anything that goes on there. Certainly puts a lot more than what three houses are gonna put out onto the road, and we seem to be able to do that without. May access, so. I don't think that that's. A big deal here, but that's that's just my opinion on these, so. Obviously, open any discussion anybody wants to have. The waivers. Yeah, yeah, it's too much better. Easy enough to get in and out. Okay. Don't think we had anything else, right? All that and. All right, so that's. That there, so. We have nothing more for that piece of a puzzle. We need closed public hearing.
We want to be close public hearing.
Okay, we have a second. Motion is second. We do have one, sorry, all right, sorry.
Six fifty one challenge here. Is that is that a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, I didn't. That will take public comment.
I think, and you can quickly go on, is the reference to the northerly about me? Okay, I just wasn't sure. My property is an integral part of this. To be approved plan, I guess. Absolutely, but there is a suggestion of, and this is where the problem that I'm having now. Is we looking for commitment. I have nothing but. Leo saying fencing sounds like a good idea. Michael saying, but that sounds just very reasonable. Kathy came to property. Fencing sounds very reasonable. I have nothing. Other than. Sounds reasonable. We want the fencing to close in our backyard to have an agreement that's gonna close it in from the existing places there. We told Leo this. Not quite six months ago, but. What we have there right now on the opposite side is a.
Which property?
I'm sorry?
Which which property are we talking about?
Six fifty one Tremont Street.
The white property on the south, the south of butter. With the driveway that's.
It is the one we're moving the lot line around for the drive.
I don't think anybody else is engaging in any land. So you're not doing anything else on anybody else's property, are you? No, they are mine. Or ours. So part of the. Suggestion was. And back and forth and to their for the last thing I asked for was to reconfigure the plan one more time. So in our backyard, there are two sheds. We do a slight frequent engineer and and Mike and Leo came up with it, I think. Now, in addition to that. My Kathy was in, my wife walked the property. We'll look for a commitment. All I have is, yeah, that sounds reasonable. I'm missing something, Leo. Our commitment is something in writing.
Wanted on public record here that they committed to putting a fence as we discussed on your bad property lines. You can condition.
And we'll condition it on our end.
Just just to Jack, the property, the project cannot go forward without the land swap being consummated, is that correct? So you're gonna need to enter into a written land swap agreement. Where I would recommend you put it in pen to paper in that.
Yeah. That's where you want the fence, right? That agreement.
But this is pretty close to a year.
But just to leave since we started.
I want I want commitment. That's what I want. And I don't want just a fence in the back. Karen showed what she wants. Is the fence that connects Leo. I want an I want a commitment. That the local woodworkers fence is there, gonna close into the house, come around the back and close it on the side, not all the way to the front. Initially, I wanted to go all the way to the front. To the sun, yeah. And closed on the other side too. And closed on the other side too, from where the existing fence is over the house.
Behind the sheds and then.
That does, that doesn't address where the existing fences, I want it clear. I don't want somebody to say this wasn't clear. I understand the planning board is not there to approve our private agreement, I get that. Just, I did get down on my own curiosity, because I never sat on a planning board. I only sat on zoning board. I did look it up. May the planning board require fencing? Yes, it's to height, location, materials and permits. So I'm not asking the board to require that, but I'm asking for a commitment. I got nothing but, yes, it sounds like a good idea. I want a commitment here. Kathy, I want a commitment. It's been there. I know what I want. You know what I want. And that's, if it's on the record now and you're committed to do it, you okay with that?
I think it's on the record.
She's okay with that.
I think you'll, you'll, you'll take care of that with your land swap.
We will.
Great, Doug, I wouldn't agree to swap in my land until.
I think you have more leverage.
Yeah, a bit more, until you get the fencing the way you want it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so. All right, the motion is second to, it was the public hearing, we have that information now input as well. And we'll have our discussion after that. We'll call for a roll call vote. Jennifer?
I need to abstain on this one only because I didn't have time to comply with the Mullins rule. Okay?
One session.
Florence, right eye.
Scott, has a ready eye.
Christian, rap, eye.
Matthew Ray, eye.
Scott, you're right. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Now we can discuss everything we have here, so I think what we're looking at is approval. Approval with requested waivers. And we would then add a condition that we property to the south address, yeah, six five one. The condition that the butters approval of the fence agreement. Acceptable to the butter. The established. So we get in there that there's gonna be a fence. You guys will work out how it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Any other condition we need here, so. Take it from there. Entertain a motion to approve with the requested waivers and condition.
Just the one condition, no additional condition.
We have our standard, the standard conditions. Less than one that obviously don't apply when there's only three. So we have the standard as well as the additional condition.
Okay, move that, the board for the subdivision plan with the five waivers and conditions.
Second?
Second.
Right, roll call vote. Jennifer abstaining.
Turcat abstain.
Florence, right eye.
Scott, has a ready eye.
Christian, rap, eye.
Matthew Ray, eye.
Scott, you're right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Next thing we have, housing production plan update, we need to vote on that, I guess.
I was a rebound.
All right. Where do we stand on that? So we left off last time, we were pretty, pretty much set, right?
If you.
Or you give through you.
Yeah.
Good to see it. Didn't you move away?
No, we didn't.
Hold on, I tell us.
Wrong one, wrong one. Do we have anything more?
Did they ask the same?
Are we still on the same?
No, we're, the plan has some change, but we're waiting to see if there's any issues, questions or modifications you might suggest. But I do note that having listened to the earlier discussions, we're taking it from ground level up to about ten thousand feet. You know, it's, it's much higher than a level of kind of conceptual plan as opposed to anything else.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody have anything from their reviews? It's all well put together, so. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Sub, submit to your approval. The next steps will be for LDS consulting to present it to the select board. And once it's been approved by them, hopefully, then it goes to the Executive Office of Housing in livable cities and.
Okay, excellent.
Couple more steps.
Absolutely, there's always more standing.
I forgot, did this include, was one of the goals to also have an implementation team?
Yes. Yeah, it's on page, page fifteen on the implementation strategies, the first item under education capacity is create housing production point implementation.
Got the other things, I'm just missing that one.
Okay. Well, we don't have any other discussion on it. Everybody's good.
Just one thing, I think, one open thing. I noticed that one of the things that were the implement, implementation strategies was to support the MBTA zoning bylaw and to represent the affordable housing as it explores MBTA Communities Act. I encourage your many to go to town, special town meeting next, in two weeks on Monday night.
Yeah, the, the concept there is not to support it necessarily, that we would vote for it as individuals, but or the committee would endorse it, but it was to cooperate with the planning board and others in the production of that plan and let it do its own course. You might also know that there was a I guess if Brian Glennon had made a proposal that if it does pass at a town meeting, then there would be a need for an additional feasibility study that would allow the town to increase the required affordable houses from ten to twenty percent. The town doesn't have the legal, you know, reserves to pay that, the housing trust is agreeing to pay that. Only if it passes.
Only if it passes, yeah.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Need further discussion? All right. And entertain the motion for the planning board's vote of support for the housing production plan update.
So good.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all who is in favor, roll call, Jen?
Jen Turcat, eye. Florence, right eye.
Scott has a grandy eye.
Matthew Ray, eye. I regard you right.
Thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you.
All right.
Fortunate to have your urgent time.
Stormwater regulations update.
Together. Yeah, I thought that would help. I did email Environmental Department, she's trying to get, you know, a more accurate timeline, because we had a meeting with them. And they're working on the regulations now, and they're looking to bring it in front of the planning board probably about February, November five. Public hearing.
Okay.
So probably write the draft here first and get non-American hands on that and kind of firm it off and then have the public hearing after that.
Yeah, I think we just gotta match it up with what we already had. Then whatever changes have been necessary, they'll point out to us.
Well, you didn't have regulations before. You just have the bylaw.
We just have the bylaw.
Yeah, so the bylaw references regulations throughout. The EPA picked up on the fact that Doc's theory did not draft any regulations to go with the bylaw.
I thought we had regulations for that.
No.
Surprise. All right.
We got that, I thought. It just can't be posted on.
Keep us posted. Yep. All right, and our last item was subdivision rule and regulations editorial and legal analysis questions. This was a group of questions we all had, yeah, take them on about a month ago or so. Well, we did this for the bylaw review and team. We're just looking for our input on which way to go on some of these things. So think I managed not bring my marked up copy of my which I had submitted, I already, and we already had. Did everybody make their way through them or? Yeah.
We just wanna go maybe one, one by one.
We can do that. Do that.
Yeah, Jen, it seemed like it made more sense to reference a law or a chapter as opposed to restate it, because then that would change and then we have to go back and change it again, whatever we can to minimize that, I vote, I vote for that.
Yeah, agree, absolutely.
Oh, you noticed?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll probably come back to.
Yeah, probably.
Oh. Oh, it's like the first one about the damages, so the question three fifty, creator fifty dash zero zero one.
Yeah.
About the damages.
That's good, because I somehow missed the first one. I have all my mark over, so I'm reading it now. I was like, why do you want to have a checklist? What am I answering for? It seems to me that the this particular statute has been rewritten and renumbered. Right?
Yeah.
So when the, when the, when the rules and regulations were originally adopted in nineteen fifty, and I referenced the chapter forty in the section eighty one. Which now, this is saying section three fifty includes a reference to section eighty one, which now is titled damages. So since, since nineteen fifty, the statute was renumbered.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like. Right, this isn't very clear. I think they're trying to continue.
Just renumber it.
Yeah. The thing with trying to sit here is when that is not covered, the references may have to be in chapters forty one, sections eighty one K, eighty one G G, so that is probably, without having looked at that statute, that's unlikely revised.
I want to remove.
Renumbered statutes.
Forty one, section eighty one.
Yeah.
Of chapter forty one and input.
Yeah, I was just using one above sections eighty one K to eighty one G G inclusive. And now we're coming.
We're talking about replace with Mass General Law, section forty one, eighty one K to eighty one G G inclusive. We got our suggestion there?
Yeah.
Okay, Emily, you gonna write these down as we do?
Yeah.
So without knowing the content, okay to G G, that includes. Right, go back, what, well, do anyone look like in nineteen fifty? Find out what the hell were we talking about back then?
That's what these guys should be doing.
Right.
That's what we're paying them to do.
Yeah.
We just want to say, ask them to make recommendations there.
Yeah, fine.
And they'll ask us, well, why did you split it in the first place? Yeah. It looks like it should be, the more I read this, it looks like it currently includes a reference, section three fifty dash one A includes a reference to section eighty one, right? If you look at it now, eighty one is entitled damages, but if you keep reading further, the authority of the planning board to adopt rules and regulations is provided in section, chapter forty one, section eighty one Q. So the more I read it, I think maybe the, the existing reference to section eighty one should be section one eighty one Q. At least that's from what they've written in this first page, that would be my initial reaction.
I think we're asking to update it to be the correct.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's it, it should be.
Get rid of our defunct reference. Okay. Question two is the best management practices. So they're indicating here a better reference would be to Massachusetts stormwater handling. Which I say was revised to refer to the stormwater handling. That way, get something must together, the best practices, which is very broad. Everybody agree with that one? Yes. Right? Next one, D R T. Ellison, U T. First, the inspectional services director. Next section here refers to inspectional services department. I don't know how this may be about the size of the series. By the way, health and subject of occupancy issued by the inspectional services department. If this reference is correct.
It happens.
I had you not revise. Now, I can't remember. I looked at this three weeks ago when I, I must have, I went, I believe I went on website and there is an inspectional services department and I I had you not revised, is what I changed.
I'm fine with the way that is.
I can't remember my analysis from three or four weeks ago when I looked at it, but I think.
There's more people than just the director in there. The department is fine. Yep.
Can you guys explain this to me? Is it just if you go in and there's like a circle?
Yeah.
Why, why would we or not, why would we or why would we not want to have that? Why separate? I guess that's my question.
Well, I don't know the rationale for why. It's in the bylaw, my experience with these types of roads, it is somewhat of a hazard where you have the three-way intersection and the stem comes up and then two roads go out to the side. You know, it's kind of pretty wrong, you know, three stop signs, it's kind of silly. So I think we just want to avoid that.
So it looks like it's a definition in search of somebody using it somewhere.
Yeah, well, it's a self-contained prohibition and definition.
Exactly.
What I was, it's trying to rewrite it and move the prohibition to the end, but it doesn't belong somewhere else. By the definition of definitions, and then when we have regulations, say this, this.
Yeah, well, keep in mind that what we're talking about here, this is our rules and regulations, it's not the bylaw.
Oh, it would be separated, that would be much.
So I would just say, I, I recall, I have this revised as they had suggested, just a better way to word it.
Yeah, you too. The only minor comment I had is the second, the broach should be capitalized, right? If it's a defined term, group road. Yeah, capital L, capital R.
Yep.
That's it.
Yep. Next one we got. Motion, yeah, honor of recognition. Columbus County Registry Bureau, Land Registry Office, definition of owner. The reference to registration office in the land court.
I can think of this one again.
Yeah.
That's ideal, it's on a daily basis. Emily, it should say Plymouth County Registry District. Registry district. Of the lake court.
Plymouth County Registry.
District of the lake courts. Yeah. Okay. Construction, the construction. Yes. So I do. Because you, you've got two. I am by. Problem with the. Define definitions in Lex. At the. In your mind. Is the bird is back and then the installation, very new. Well, any construction somewhere, some materials upon and beneath the land. Anchored it installed either by piling, footings, or a foundation or attachment. Cleaned, my thinking. He's looking for a verb between materials and a pond, is that right?
Yeah.
Either by, missing a verb, attached or installed. Constructed either by. Whatever verb it is, that's what's.
Okay. The one I had there. If you want to. Raise that. Are you good with that?
When is the end, construction direction is.
I looked at it as like, why don't we get rid of including but not.
Right, I think that's where they're going, but I understand, I would agree with that.
I think there's two steps, I agree with Scott again, and we revised as indicated, but then I think tax comment is on top of that.
Yep.
Yes, what about similar or other combination of materials that are? On or beneath the land, either by piling, it's going to. That's all it?
It's situated.
Okay. Is it that then?
So excepting. Or as. I'm sorry.
They're considered.
Structures.
Yep.
So they have setbacks.
Not always.
That's something. So I know.
They don't always have setbacks, like a swimming pool can be ten feet. For different guidelines. Everything's kind of different.
Okay, Miss Four Quark can go right up.
Yep. Yep. But they're all considered structures. In sentence.
Sentence.
Sentence. Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
All right, you got that one? Subdivision. Several runts.
Yeah. Got it in, yes.
Yep. Yeah, this is that old chess map.
Well, when I read this, I had revised reference to section three hundred dash twenty six D.
Yeah.
But, but not the second one? If you have to check something.
Yeah, I think it was check one.
Yeah. So it's twenty six D, right? Great.
For nine.
Nine, that's sort of. So control, oh, yeah, forty one K. Next one.
Is my time right? The way it says.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Six. Emily, would you like to see pure sets of plans?
Any sets of plans you end up throwing out?
A lot, I don't think we need seventeen map size. I send one to each of you. And then. Two for us. Like nine.
So we'll ignore the first two options and do our own separate revision, reducing the number of plans? Is, I, I, no, Matt, I, I had, I had said the correct numbers, I was basing up what's in there, but if we're going to revise what's actually required.
How many full size do you need, two?
I think one is fine.
One? So one full. Ten. Half.
Anybody else like Pat or anybody?
I usually just send them to him over email.
Yeah, the thing is everything. So if we go to one full and. Ten half. We got that. Right? Okay.
But. Eleven. I was definitely going to say. Is there a way just to say, see current schedule fees wherever that is? Because I think if that was, this is appearing in a couple of different places. And this, this is a checklist, but is there, yeah, so go to the.
And eleven, I didn't touch that one.
Remove it.
Yeah. I didn't search state of the current forms of checklist.
Yeah.
Look, I had, I had revised as follows, water and sewer superintendent. That's the title.
That's the title we have.
Yeah, okay.
It's not the director of public works. Right?
Number thirteen.
You need to be in a base of the file piece?
Yeah, this is what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
And is there a way just to reference, seeing, see planning department for dated list of fees or scheduled fees? I have alignment with what we just said. On number eleven. Per, per fee schedule can be obtained from the planning department.
Is there on the? Checklist in the appendix it says too, so.
Hold on, we've been using probably spent a long time.
They were updated last year, the third, so they're outdated and.
Yeah, so that does have the most recent update. So we need them to update to. To our new fees. For twenty twenty, we did it twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
Do the fees need to be specified in the regulations?
Just to ask them.
It's fine, we just do a general.
This has been changed right here.
Yeah.
You won't have to update regulations.
Really, you just say, yeah.
But it looks like they're in the, they're in the checklist, appendix F also, so.
So you're, okay, I saw what you're saying, it's part of this document.
Yeah. Yeah, they just need to be off, at a minimum, they need to be updated. Got them all in there versus. On the appendix, they need to be updated.
And we can, we can approve the rules and regulations without.
That's correct.
Going to town meetings.
Yeah.
From that just because. This is something, because we haven't approved the fees before.
We just forgot to.
Add them here.
Get them changed in those regulations.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like busy, we're coming, the select board holds hearing on fees.
Right.
And then we would have to hold another hearing on updating regulations to reflect the updated fees. So move them out of the regulations.
Yes.
Okay. That's a suggestion to them. And we have a schedule of fees for everybody that comes in anyway, you just gotta. Hand out what we did.
Yeah, it's on the website too.
Okay, so if we get it out of here, then it's not, never out of date.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, because we want to increase them later in two years, then we're back.
Yeah, same back to the same program, it's like when we used to change the map. You had all the map references as the day you changed the map instead of, you know, where the updated map is. So.
I love the chance.
Because we never updated the bylaws.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, let's. Fifty.
Emily, just this.
If we already updated these amounts?
Yeah, they are. It's different. It says one where it would make sense to do that too.
Yes. Yeah, we're for it, yeah. Yeah, proviso, refer to fee schedule.
So we have to, but it says the. I think you could say special conscious, consulting cost requires, take out the requires, for development of three or fewer lots and. Yep. Requires certain. Minimum deposits that set forth in the schedule of fees are filed with the. Planning department. Yeah, the whole thing about is the rule about three lots or fewer.
Right.
Or more. Specific dollar.
Yeah, sure.
So there's a threshold.
Two thresholds. Yeah. As long as that's laid out, the threshold in all arts.
Yeah, as long as it's set forth in the, in the list of fees. Developments, three lots or fewer, three thousand dollars positive, additional five hundred dollars for each additional lot. We modeled a lot there, Emily, did you get? Yeah, so you get discretion, so that's, that's. Yeah, I think you can remove the specific dollar amounts and instruct them to. Include a reference to the list of fees as, you know, file current, these are the files. Should be able to revise that.
Got that one now?
Yeah.
All right. Six. Provides wording to get statute. Another one, did we update this one?
I'm sorry, I don't, uh, do we have a rationale for having higher standard?
State requires three years and we require five years, that's why there was. Now, I think the state is probably the moving target there. Probably when we put it in place, the state is five years, that would be my guess, that we were just following whatever the law said. But that's my question, if the law sets a low bar and you set a higher one. I don't know if we've ever had anybody get to. We didn't change this, I don't think. No. I shouldn't just leave that, I don't know if you should. Not seventeen. We'll talk about fees again, basically, yeah, how you calculate the bond of mile.
Does that change?
I don't think we even reviewed this one.
It's happened here, it's not on the fee schedule.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in here and we haven't, we never pulled it out onto the fee center. They don't have a problem. Probably just leave. Do not revise it, we're there. Eighteen. Acknowledge. We're going to definitely acknowledge. Yeah, we acknowledge. You've been acknowledged. All right, last one.
Oh, Matt, yeah, I'm just looking for this. We have a convention for mapping.
Showing the zoning map?
Showing on the zoning and so on. Yeah. Yep. He looked so bad. Which I brought my copy, I made my notes. Been reading them all again. I can't remember why on the list. All right. Made it through there. They got anything else?
Ask Rebecca, how are you doing? Good. You know anything from us?
Your hair hasn't caught on fire yet?
You're still here.
I'm here still, yeah.
All the, all the other. Committees haven't been driving you nuts enough and everything.
I was at coastal resilience before that.
Okay.
They snared me.
Okay.
They said, Paul, come to all these meetings, I'm twenty-four hours, I would be.
Yeah.
But no, I told them they can retire, I'm sorry. Be of assistance, but.
So so far it's been workload, you're able to handle it?
Yeah, yeah, I stepped on. Planning board is my number one, that's what I was told when I started in M B T A and. I've been focusing on. That. Now on hazard mitigation, that's coming down the pipeline. Yeah, and M V P, there's an update needed for that. Yeah, I, I'm a little worried about those both happening at the same time because they can be confusing for people.
Yes, very.
They both, I have reference, you don't find a change and. Sort of very similar, so.
Which ones are these?
Um, mental vulnerability plan, they're kind of two point O. Um, I meet with the state today, have like a kickoff meeting with. Sorry, was it regional planning agency?
Maybe you see.
I mean, you see, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have two.
Yeah, what is the other one called?
OC. Oh, common name.
Oh, come. Uh, yeah, we had a kickoff meeting with them today about coming up with a timeline for hazard mitigation. So. Moving things along.
Yes, moving them along. Log jam, we're listening.
Yeah. And then that, what about the side lot?
No, I don't know.
No, I don't know. Um, I, Emily helped submit, it was submitted on time. They were expecting maybe a decision.
I don't hear. Giving like a thirty month window.
Yeah.
And it was submitted until my parents, so.
Yeah, I didn't, they were hoping to answer by the end of the year. See what our answer is, especially.
I know.
Yeah, that.
Because I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, but did I tell you that we didn't submit the free adoption application? Okay, I thought I did.
Any words?
No.
So they were trying to get it back quick, they said, wasn't that?
Yeah, I pushed them a little bit even after the fact. Um, we kind of called them out on the fact that they did say that in the. Rejection letter of not giving us an extension, so they know that we're watching them, the meeting, the dedication.
Yeah. It's coming up quick.
Yeah. Yeah, what, two weeks, right?
Yeah, that'll be here. Kind of blink of an eye.
I'm hoping we hear something by the end of the meeting, but it's also last minute. I mean, typically, the community is supposed to submit it at least ninety days, but we're town meeting, so. I don't want to be super pushy, but. Najee.
Yeah, yeah. Have we known any other towns? Have any other towns done there? Everybody was trying to do special town meetings to try to see what they were going to do, right? There's a whole bunch of towns who hadn't made a decision on this.
That have or haven't.
That haven't.
Right. Um, I was actually looking at the list today and I, I wrote an article, it would be about Marvel had not moved forward. So they look like they're going to be on.
So they voted it down or they're just not going to do it? Which, which did it sound like they went to town meeting and they said no?
I, I have to double check.
Okay. I know some towns are just saying, well, we're not going to.
We're not.
They're ignoring, we're not going to do anything, and others are bringing it to town meeting and letting them decide.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, um, there's a list of how many. At their group, I can only show you, I feel like that data inside the tier.
I think we'll really have no idea what the reaction is going to be until deadline's gone by.
Yeah.
And then do a bunch of towns get together. Go ahead, no. For lack of better words, sue the state, say you can't keep our money. We don't want to do this.
I don't think anybody's going to do anything until the SJC case comes down.
Yeah. Well, we all have to have some reaction though before the thirty-first, right? So.
Yeah, getting the reaction of the while we tried.
Oh, yeah. No, no. And we, and we have another town meeting that comes up in March, so it isn't like we can't get a second bite at it with adjustments. If we get close or, or if we do find out after the deadline goes by, that we're going to. Not just get slapped on the hand, we're going to get our hands crushed. For some reason, we might have to go back to town meeting and make some adjustments to whatever somebody can. Town meeting can approve, so.
I think administratively, if you don't pass it in November and you have like a second crack at it in March. There's not much that you can lose this week now in March, and that's to mention the fact that they're so overloaded, I mean. Amy Clussel said it in her meeting, they're not keeping this like crazy list of, oh, this person applied for this grant, they're not getting this and. You know, that requires extreme communication on their part. You think that these state agencies are that refined, but they're really not. They have to reach out to each other and get information. It takes time and resources and. I'm sure E O H L C is not spending all of their time figuring out which grant, you know, so March is so close. I mean, you haven't early anyone's town meeting, we're lucky.
Yeah, so I, so that, that's kind of the thought process we had on the opinion. We, we do have the potential to make an adjustment, if we think we're close. And by that point, hopefully, maybe we will hear something from the state about how many are non-compliance and what they're going to do. If enough. Towns don't comply and are adamant about they don't want to be pushed around on this, but they're going to have to listen to something. That's the case.
I haven't seen them budge it now, yet.
They don't budge until, until they, until they have to.
Well, they, if they, if they budge now, then it sends a, it's challenging for the towns who've done it, towns who have, but it's not, not everybody's telling about it same way.
Yeah.
There probably doesn't. Um, question, what's this, this special town meeting on eighteen?
Seventeen.
When you have that set back.
Speaking of that, is the working, not the planning board, with the working group doing the presentation, even have the proposed zone?
Glad you asked, man, because in the working group discussions, we do, we have a whole presentation, I spent some time with Alison today, we're trying to hone it down. Because it's like thirty minutes and twenty something slides and we don't want to do that, and we're getting to fifteen minutes. So we got it down to seven slides and, you know, maybe ten minutes, we just rip through, assuming that people are up to speed.
Yeah.
Uh, but we saw all the backup, yeah.
Yeah.
So in terms of stage management. The working group wanted to have me ask you if you would introduce the motion from the planning board, so it originates from the planning board and it handed off to you, myself, probably to present it.
Well, usually on any of these, I mean. The. Our, our clerk usually reads.
Oh, yeah.
In. The. Anything that says only change, so the clerk would introduce what the article is.
Jen, or what?
Jen is our clerk, right?
She's not online.
So that's generally how they, how they, it starts off and then, then she will also say the vote of the planning board. So they'll read in what the article is, what it's on, da, 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 and then our vote. That's how it gets introduced and it gets turned over at that point. So that, that process should still happen. The backup is, 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 is device.
Oh, so the chair.
Chair is the last resort.
The chair decided that the backup is the butt.
I'll let you get sick on the, on the seventeen. Those, those issues roll uphill.
Would you like to, no, you just reach out to our askers, funny would be there.
Because we need, as, as the clerk, we need her to do the reading in of the. Article.
Of the tag, how long do you think the presentation was to us? I thought it was pretty quick. Was it?
Yeah, I'd say it's always over twenty.
It's slim, it's fifteen, twenty, ten.
Yeah. I think ideally fifteen to twenty minutes, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. It'll be interesting to see how the moderator deals with people asking you the same questions or just stating how they dislike something over and over and over again.
He's going to have to a couple times to say, I think we're hearing the same thing, but I agree something.
I think you out, though, and I have that at the door too, I think that would stop maybe some people from voting, you know. Ellis and I have talked about that.
Yeah. Usually with anything we have, you know, the, the tables along where we check in have got. All the paperwork on everything, so people are used to picking that stuff off, I think, so if we have that in the same. Like we normally would do. I think, I think that'll help. It means. It's going to be one of these ones, it's going to be very interesting, let's see what they, how much turnout we get, where it's a special town meeting and only a couple of articles, it's probably going to be big turnout. Because it's a hot topic too. So.
Town council will be there to answer any questions.
Yes, so it'll be, I think it's going to be interesting. It's going to be interesting. So, or not. Next thing you know, somebody gets up and says, move your question, let's go.
So another, just not to. Select board meeting stated that the park or the annual town meeting is going to open on November twentieth and close on December fifth. So.
We can.
We intend to put like the A U on there.
I was going to say.
There's a couple of things that we need to deal with, really.
Well, A U is by right. Technically, it's there.
Yeah, we're going to deal with short-term rental.
Yeah, we want to make sure short-term rental issue of it.
And we also wanted just to, to review it, she was, Amy was supposed to provide us a, a draft relative to Dexter, because we wanted to look and see if there's anything that we wanted to modify.
Yeah.
For that.
So we still need that. Can we remind Amy again?
Yeah, I asked for the other day.
Okay.
The state didn't come out with a model bylaw yet. For A U?
Yeah, yes.
I was just on a webinar today about it. And, and they didn't have a model bylaw, yeah.
Okay.
So maybe she's waiting on that, just to see what the state puts out first and when she can, we get to that, it's very, we can ask her.
Did the state? Might have known this before anyway, and I can't remember, but did the state say when, when it's effective, when people can technically do it, was it a year? We got you already.
What is that? Maybe it took her a second.
Second, yeah, I have the wrong date, but I know it's somewhere.
So they should come up with some guidance pretty quickly if they're going to do that.
This morning, they said that they are still in the midst of doing the, um, model bylaw and the right, they're, they're putting out a set of regulations still, pretty long after.
Yep. They're going to have regulations too.
Yeah, and definitions, so.
Like setting a commencement date without the, the bylaw regulations either.
But I was like, wait, that felt like they were late to the, they're late to party.
Yeah.
It wasn't kind of days everywhere.
Yeah. Everybody has their meetings at.
Um, and then wasn't Amy also looking at in pushing, in pushing our bylaw for us? So can you see, part of, isn't that?
M A P C is doing that.
Are they updating that?
Is it over to her for review already?
She was going to provide and provide us with something like a draft.
From a different town?
Maybe I'm thinking. M A P C is.
M A P C was doing the whole project, yeah.
Yeah, they're on, they're drafting it right now.
That's not going to be ready for the town.
So when it comes to a war, can we put a placeholder in? Does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah, they asked for language by December twelfth. Really, press it all, get it out of the way before the home is.
Yeah, not always that possible, I think we, we should probably ask for a placeholder on. The A U and at, at a minimum to our bylaw, if we don't have anything from the state with the model bylaw yet, put in there. For the town to decide. If, but a prohibition on the short-term rentals, because the state said we could do, so why not enshrine it in the bylaw that. We have to put in the definition of A U, because we don't have that definition in there. And then add in wherever would be appropriate, that they are armed allowed as short-term rentals in town or elsewhere. Which is prohibited that way, once town votes that through, that's fine, and then when we get the model bylaw, we can make the next adjustments after that.
How short-term rentals defined?
Short-term rentals, anything under thirty days.
Yeah.
They defined it this morning in their, our six, surrender sixty-four shade, sixty, what was it, sixty-four? Sixty something.
Okay, but it's thirty days or less, isn't it? Yeah. I think that's pretty much a standard. Situation, that's in other states, it's the same thing, it's thirty days.
Yeah.
So. Everybody seems to run with that. But, yeah, so we do that, we get a placeholder for that, I can't think of anything else we're going to be looking for. Anything else, just going to be longer out. All right. All done?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All right. We are adjourned, thank you.